Alright ladies and gentlemen, council is in session. Welcome to Night City Council. I am John John the Wise and I have with me James Hut from Artel Sorion Games.
Hello everyone.
This is episode one of our of our new series that we'll be doing once a month for all of you cyberpunk fans out there. And it is called Night City Council. Where the mayor is going to be answering questions from the community. If you guys have seen some of my past videos, you're already used to the format. But we're going to do things a little bit different. We're not going to just do questions. We're also going to be showing off some cool stuff from Artel Sorion Games. This month, we'll talk about whatever we're talking about. And then next month, we'll talk about something else. And I'm sure if there's something Artel Sorion wants to reveal for us. That James will be the ambassador of the prophecy from Artel Sorion Games.
I don't know.
No promises.
There's no prophecies about the prophecy.
No, there's nothing like, nothing of the sort.
There's no meta prophecy.
No, no. Uh, let me turn my gain up just a little bit here. And that's too low, that's too high, that's just right. Yeah, that's it. Okay, so basically, um, before we begin, make sure you guys join the Discord community. The link will be in the description below. And make sure you guys uh, follow me on social media at John John the Wise. I'm on all the social media platforms. You can also listen to my podcast Tabletop Cyberpunk where this will be on. And um, and I talk about cyberpunk and stuff like that. And if you want to show your support for this channel, patreon.com/JohnJohnTheWise. That's the best way to support me and I really, really appreciate all the patrons. On top of that, make sure you guys follow Artel Sorion Games on social media. They're on Twitter, they're on Facebook. They're all over the place. And that's the best way you can see about new updates, new changes, new things that they're doing with the company and new releases. And also make sure you guys follow their blog, artelsoriongames.com. Is where you guys can find everything like From the Mayor's Desk, which by the way. Let's set the record straight because there's been a lot of questions from people whether you are going to be discontinuing that. Uh, project called From the Mayor's Desk. So why don't you uh, tell the viewers here what's going on with that?
Uh, no, the mayor still has a desk. Uh, there's just also city council meetings that I have to do in the neighboring town of Night City. I'm actually flown in from Balance Town to be at this. Council. Well, I will when we're doing in-person uh, town meetings again. This is a, this is a virtual gathering.
Very good. So from the mayor's desk.
Uh, it's not a replacement. It's a, it's an also. And. And uh. This one will hopefully be a little more regular than From the Mayor's Desk has been. Just been very busy in Balance Town.
Yeah, exactly. And basically what had happened with uh, this show is we realized that there's a lot of questions from the community. We got a lot of positivity from you guys. From answering the questions in the past. So we want to make sure that we continue to do that. But there's also really a lot of cool stuff from Artel Sorion. That we're kind of neglecting as a community because I think it's just, it's just the algorithm. Sometimes it gets there, sometimes it doesn't get there. So I'm just here to be a part of the cause and make sure that you guys get that information out there. Alright, so. Why don't we get straight into the questions that people have had in the community? We're going to do this for as long as we can for about 30 minutes and then the next half of the show. We're going to be talking about two DLC. Free DLCs that you can get from Artel Sorion Games from their website and we'll talk about them in depth. Okay? So first question is an economy question. James, how does armor repair work?
Uh, on page 140, there's a sidebar detailing how armor repair works. It details how all item repair works. If it's not covered by a specific tech skill, then it's always under basic tech. So armor repair, armor isn't covered by its own special tech skill. So we default basic tech. And then we use the rules on page 140 on the sidebar.
There you go. So page 140 is where you're going to find information on how armor repair works in the core rulebook. But yeah.
I could, I could go ahead and detail that. It's just different based on how expensive the item you're repairing is and I want to get to other questions.
Yeah, sounds good. And then there's a corresponding skill for the item that you're going to be repairing. And it's kind of like up to GM discretion and some of them are obvious, right?
Well, it's, I mean. It's listed in the section where the skills are, which skill is for what?
Okay.
And then in the basic tech thing, it says this is for everything that isn't covered by another skill.
Got you. Okay.
It's the catch-all. So when in doubt, basic tech.
Okay, so uh, let's move on to the second question. It has multiple parts to it. But basically, um, we want to know what skills would a tech use to fabricate? Poisons, biotoxins, explosives, street drugs, black ice programs. Uh, what can you give us as far as insight for stuff like that?
Okay, so. On the uh, so. Fabricate um, is part of the tech classes, uh, tech roles. Special ability. So what you want to do is you want to go to the text that just, that shows you what the tech special ability uh, maker does. Fabricate is part of that. Um, here I have that the tech skill that the item is typically repaired with. Is the one that you use to make it. It's really connected to the first question. Um, because basic tech is the catch-all skill. So if it's not prepared with a specific skill, then it's made with basic. I believe poisons and biotoxins are covered under basic tech. Explosives, also basic tech. Uh, street drugs, basic tech. And uh, black ice and net running programs, these ones would be covered under electronic slash security tech. Cause they're electronics.
Yep, okay, makes sense. The uh, that skill actually. I, when I first read that skill, electronic security. Check or tech? The, I, I didn't regard that slash. So basically what that skill is telling you is any kind of electronics. Or any kind of like security that's connected to electronics. Is what this skill is for. So it's not just electronic security, it's also electronics.
Yes.
Yeah, as an umbrella. Okay. Alright, here we go. We're kind of flying through these. This is fun. Uh, James, does interface crit fail and success fail?
Yes, because you roll a d10.
Is there anything?
A 10 is a crit succeed, 1 is a crit fail.
Is there anything that doesn't crit? Uh, death saves, right? Death saves don't crit.
I believe death saves are a specific thing that we lock down.
Yeah.
But um, other than that, yeah, no.
Okay, here's a little bit more of a broad question. I think that we'll be touching on this a little bit longer. Advice for pacing. Combat encounters, plot points and general feel of your game to make it balanced. So what's your opinion on what is a balanced gameplay? In, for a gameplay session of Cyberpunk Red where you pace it correctly, there's just enough combat and there's just enough story?
That's a very, very good question. It's also a very long question, but I will attempt to give you a part of the puzzle. Um, for the full answer to the puzzle, you're looking at, you gotta get experience being a GM. You gotta be voracious in reading about how other people GM and absorb that knowledge. You gotta do all that. But I'll give you a nugget. If you make the world play dirty. Uh, the world has to be dirty, but here's the thing, the players are still heroes. So. You have to foreshadow the dirty tricks the world will try to pull earlier. Cause if you just pull a dirty trick out of nowhere, they're going to feel like you. You really uh, tricked them, you know, it won't feel earned. Um, but if you foreshadow it even a little bit earlier. And then they get hit with it, they're suddenly not like, that was dirty. It was, I get it, I'm in a dirty world. And then for balance sake, please remember that poor quality weapons exist when you make encounters. You don't have to give your players a brand new assault rifle. Every time you want to put assault rifle in, just put in a poor quality assault rifle, it's a hundred bucks and then shoot auto fire at them. It'll be great.
Yeah, I also, one of my favorite things to do. Is I begin a session in the middle of a piece of action. So instead of like all of us meeting up in a bar or something like that. We're not just meeting at the bar. There's a poker game going on at the bar and you're part of the poker game. And I let you know that one of the players that you're playing against, you have, you suspect them of cheating. So that automatically puts you into this scenario where you're rolling dice, you're role-playing, you're trying to figure out things, there's a mystery involved. And that all involves action right away, gets people right into it. Uh, the second piece of advice I would give when you're doing a balanced uh, combat encounter. Is the general rule of thumb is the same. Amount of combatants as the party. Is usually pretty balanced. A little bit less. And uh, the, the enemies are outnumbered, it's not much of a challenge. A little bit more, it's a, it might be a little bit too challenging. And force your players to run away. But if you got like just as many as the players and you tune them right, you got some of them that are elite, some of them that are nobodies. And you, you have a mixed bag like that, it usually ends up being. Uh, a good balanced combat encounter. Because all the weapons are just as powerful, no matter whose hands they're in. It's just about whether they hit or not, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can get double sixes on a guy that is like a normal goon and give one of your players a critical injury. And this whole combat encounter is flipped into something a lot more dangerous. So, yeah, that's my advice.
We'll be talking about how to, how to make it a little spicier. I'd turn up the heat a little bit in the second half of this.
That's right.
Hardened moocs. But uh, but for now, yeah. Pause the video, go watch some more John John the Wise videos.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, and there's a bunch of uh, content creators out there that have actual plays. You can actually find that on Artel Sorion's website. They have a list of actual plays. And you, sometimes just watching people play. And seeing how they do things, it gives you inspiration on how you can do things in your game. I know that that's how I, I learned from you, James, when you did that hustle chart. In the beginning with your new players, like you just met these guys and you're running a game for them. You ran a hustle chart to figure out what did you guys do last week? And gave them some pocket money. I really, really liked that and that's like a big part of my games now. So.
It's a convention game secret.
Oh, it's so good. It's great because it gives you a story and then sometimes you can connect it to the plot. Cause you're like, oh, you were doing a gig. For some booster gangs? Well, these booster gangs happen to be the big bad guys in the story. So that's perfect. So yeah, so there's all that going on. Alright, I think uh, we can move on to the next question. Net running program defense. How do you, how do netrunner programs defend versus attacked?
Okay, this one comes from page. 201. It's program defense plus 1d10. Um, so when you attack, say if you um, I rez armor. Um, I rez the armor program. It's not on me. It's near me. You can shoot it without shooting me. Uh, in fact, you have to decide which one you're targeting. So you know, taking down their armor program and then hitting them is usually a good plan.
Yeah.
One of the reasons why, um, the thing is that uh, black ice programs are too dumb to do that. Uh, as they list when you're fighting black ice. So this is really a netrunner versus netrunner problem. And is one of the reasons that netrunners fighting other netrunners is actually the deadliest. You thought normal netrunning was deadly. Netrunner versus netrunner is the deadliest kind of netrunning.
Oh yeah, for sure. There's no, no uh, no ifs, ands or buts about that. Um, so do they get, do they get any bonuses? Are there any bonus uh, programs or anything out there?
Um, I believe uh, each uh, each program has its own. Death statistic. A lot of booster programs have zero death, so it's just a d10 roll. So no.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Uh, alright, let's move on to linear frames. Are linear frames obvious apparatus or are they subtle? Is there a way to play them subtly?
Okay, so. Linear frame is actually two ideas. Uh, there's a step-in linear frame called an external linear frame. This is the one you plug into interface plugs. This is not subtle at all. Um, this is uh, the end of Alien, I believe, with the.
The big exosuit.
Thing that what, that sick robot from the end of Alien.
Yeah, or even from the Matrix. The Matrix, those guys that fought off those, the machines, they're in those like exosuits.
Yeah, this is, it's an exosuit. It's a thinner one. This isn't full, you know. Maximum metal.
Yeah.
2020 fans, it's not full maximum metal. Um, but uh. Those things are not subtle. You can see them from a mile away. Implanted linear frames. Are also not subtle. They're not subtle at all. Um, if you have an implanted linear frame in, even like the less good one. You still look kind of what, well, it's the animals from 2077. Oh, that's sort of your, your shtick. They're, they're popping out, they're uh. Because you had to get two, um, the other thing is if you want to raise your body while being subtle about it, you can get a little muscle and bone lace and that is, that is harder, harder to tell. Um, you won't be able to tell if, cause there's real skin over it. Um, even if you put real skin over an implanted linear frame, it would still look pretty chunky.
Could a tech upgrade a linear frame to make it more concealable or is that a little too much breaking the game?
Anything they want, as long as the GM says it's cool. They just might need to invent it themselves.
Got you, got you.
There are rules for that in Maker. If you wanna, if you love making homebrew, but you're also a player in a game and not a GM. Gotta play a tech.
Got it. Alright, next question. Can you clarify how to roll for pharmaceuticals or surgery rolls? I think there's a lot of uh, confusion on. What we do. We add our roll ability, we add a tech, do we add a d10? Like what else do we add to it?
Okay, so um, this is. For pharmaceuticals and surgery rolls?
Yes.
Well, you have a skill. And you add your stat to it. They're both tech skills. I'm uh. I'm a little. So, so the question is, how do you roll for this thing?
Yeah, so let's say I wanted to make some boost, right? What would I roll? I would roll 1d10 plus pharmaceuticals?
So uh, both pharmaceuticals. And cryo system operations are actually both the same skill. It's called medical tech. So uh, it's a different answer for both. Uh, for surgery, you're adding 1d10 plus your tech skill plus your surgery skill. 1d10 plus tech plus surgery. For pharmaceuticals, um, when you're rolling for pharmaceuticals. Uh, you're rolling. A d10. Plus tech, plus medical tech.
Okay, so.
Medical tech is the name of the skill.
So the rankings in pharmaceuticals, where do they play in? Like putting two, three points into pharmaceuticals, what is, what do those two, three points do for me?
Okay, um. So each time you allocate point into pharm, so it's on page 149. That is where that's spelled out in the medical tech section. Medical tech is the tech skill used to operate, understand and repair medical machinery. Um, so that's operating it, whether you're using it to make pharmaceuticals or you're using it to. Use a cryo system.
Got it. So you're rolling to use the equipment?
Yes.
Got it.
Um, you're not, you know, synthesizing out of nowhere, you're using a synthesizer.
Got you, got you. So you're using, it's assumed that you're using medical equipment and you know how to use it and then that's where the skill is involved. Got it.
Yes.
Okay, so and then um. Uh, okay.
And uh. Yeah, 149, 150. That's, that's where you find the, the information specifics on pharmaceuticals.
Let's say you find a dead body, it's got cyberware on it. How, what do I roll to remove the piece? What do I roll to install it on a friend? And uh, we talked about repairs, so we don't have to talk about that.
Found cyberware is covered on 226. So you see, you've got a body. You're pulling out the found cyberware. Um, there's two ways of doing it. The first way is the surgical route on page 226. It discusses it in the found cyber section. Depending on what type of installation. It's installed with. Every cyberware has, hey, it's installed in the mall, hey, it's installed in the clinic, hey, it's installed in a hospital. That's 13, DB13 surgery, DB15 surgery, DB17 surgery. Um, and then. There is also, uh, there's a cost then to get it installed. Um, once you've found it. Removing it via surgery doesn't damage the cyberware, which is really cool. Because taking the cyber heart out of your dead victim and ripping it out like that destroys it in the process. Which is fine as long as you repair it later. It's just a toss additional time and money. Um, you know, time is money too, so uh. And uh, it does take two hours of operating time to surgically remove the cyber heart from your victim.
Okay. Okay, I think that covers it. So uh, what page is that?
Four hours, four hours, I misread it.
Okay, what page was that again?
Uh, 226. It lists the remove, that's the section for removing them carefully with surgery, the surgery skill. And uh, the tried and true, rip out the heart and then I'll repair it later. That's uh. That's just uh, that's, that's not on that page, but. You'll find it. And then you repair it. Using the repair skill for it. Um, which is cyber tech.
And if I want to uh, identify the pieces of cyberware, obviously cyber tech. Is what you use to identify it.
What you use to identify it.
Yeah, and you identify its components, how it works, how it functions.
Yeah. The item repair sidebar is on page 140.
140.
When you want to repair it after you rip it out and destroy it in the process.
Cool, alright, that's awesome. Uh, let's move on. Um. That question is going to be answered later. Uh, can vehicles use the run action?
Uh, no and yes. Um, the no is vehicles can't use the run action because the second you get in a vehicle. It disables the run action. That's, those are just in the normal vehicle rules. Um, however, there is something that mimics the run action that vehicles can do and that's installing. Um, I believe NOSS.
Oh yeah.
We call it.
Yeah, yeah, NOSS nitrox oxide.
That is. Essentially just the run action.
And that's what nomads can do, right? It's a nomad upgrade?
It's a nomad upgrade, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool. Okay, that sounds good. Alright, can passengers grab the wheel and steer? If so, do they take negative uh, modifiers? To the drive test or anything like that?
This is a um. This is a GM Fiat. Answer. Uh, the answer is, this is really cool. Um, if there was a situation and one of my players wanted to do this, I'd be like, damn, that's really cool. This is like an action movie. Dude, you're awesome.
Yeah.
Um, and then I would let them do it with their action.
Yeah, definitely.
And I would give them a minus two because even though it's cool, it's hard.
Yeah, I might do uh, one of my homebrew cool checks that you're a fan of, James. Where I'll have them roll a d10 and if they roll under their cool stat. Then I'll be like, alright, you don't get any negatives to the steering and stuff that you're doing, but if you fail that, then you do get negatives.
I mean. John John, you're allowed to use whatever homebrew you like.
There you go. I have permission from James to ruin the game. Alright, sounds good. So there's that. I do, that's very cyberpunk, by the way. That's like with the essence of cyberpunk is grabbing the wheel, hopping out. Auto firing out the window. So I, a lot of the questions, James and I, we were kind of talking off uh, off air. A lot of the answers to these questions are, it's really up to you as a GM. The Artel Sorion Games and the design of Cyberpunk 2020 and Red. And just the whole genre. Through Artel Sorion Games has always been, here's the blueprint, here's the tools. You guys do whatever works for your table, whatever is fun and have at it. And uh, I think that that is like the best advice that I can give you as an experienced game master and I'm sure James would say the same thing.
I built. I built the system as a builder's system. It's a system for people who want to modify it. Uh, it accepts your modifications, hopefully willingly. Uh, with uh, without too many gripes in the like, oh, but this rule then interacts with this rule in a weird way.
Yeah.
Just uh. As long as you keep your, your stuff modally into a uh, into like, it slots in. And you don't try to like, we'll remove the entire pricing structure of the game and replace it with this.
Yeah.
Um, then everything's gonna work.
Yeah.
As, as you know, as they say, it just works.
It finds a way. And uh, basically, so like this situation with the steering wheel grabbing it, it's, there, it does, there's no. Description in the book on exactly what to do in that situation. But there's so many skills, there's so many opportunities and there's a vehicle combat system. You can just, your best guess is the correct answer.
Sounds like a driveland vehicle maneuver.
Yeah, exactly.
With one of our helpful negatives that you can add to it because it sounds hard.
Alright, here's a number, this is actually interesting to me. Uh, oh whoops, I'm, I'm skipping 13. Can exotics be upgraded and does that break the game?
So um. Exa, upgraded, you mean by a tech?
Yes.
Yeah.
So like extended magazine on like the railgun or something like that?
I mean. Through the tech ability, yes. When we talk about exotics, uh, here, we're talking about weapons that. Um, have a couple of caveats to them. I'm trying to, there's just a lot of times we say exotic in the core rulebook. I can't get you the exact page number where we described the definition of an exotic, but know that it exists and you should read it. Um, and breaking any of the rules we set for that class of weapons. Should be done by a tech as their one cool thing they get to do the weapon. And if they're only doing one cool thing to the weapon, they just made it cooler, they didn't make it broken. But. But. If you start getting into the place where the tech is like, and I want to modify it to also be a flamethrower car. And then you say, but it was a pocket radio. Um, you know, you're, you're, obviously if you accept a extremely broken. Tech created item into your game, it will be broken.
Yeah.
Um, part of, but here's the thing, part of that process of the tech. Ability. Uh, maker. Innovating items to be upgraded a little differently. Uh, is that interplay between GM and player, hey, this is kind of destabilizing, we should change it and then the player should go, yeah, cool, what are we doing there? And the thing is, when you do go in and say that's broken, we need to change it, you're obligated to replace it. You can't just say you don't get to have your toy anymore. You have, you get, you have to say, oh, you're kind of in a class that's playing the, I want to have a toy. We'll give you a new one.
Yeah, exactly. I always have my tech's role to do whatever and if they fail. I mean, everything is ruined. The whole project is ruined, you're gonna need brand new materials. So that's like the risk and reward situation of a tech, you know, and that's why luck is really important. When you're a tech as well, to make sure that you don't fail on your repairs and upgrades.
Not sure that's raw, but uh.
Wait, you can't put luck into, I thought you could.
No, no, you don't, you don't lose all of your stuff.
Oh, oh, that's right. Uh.
Fail check halfway through the process, you have to, you realize you have to start again from scratch. The materials purchased to make the item are uninjured. Hate to rain on your parade, John John, but I will call you out.
Okay, no, that's good. It's good. People should know the rules as written. And not John John's homebrew world of insanity. Because literally that's what my world. Yeah.
148, you gotta know if you're GM. Unfortunately, it's one of those classes that you gotta know the rules for.
Hey, like rules as written, your, your materials are fine, John John has written, they're all destroyed, alright? So that's just, that's just why.
John John really doesn't like his.
No, he doesn't. Uh, I think the answer to the next one is a yes or no question. We'll do that really quick because I, I am actually can uh. Uh, curious about this. Are there upgrades that a tech can make that are not listed in the book or does a tech need to use invention and that whole process to come up with an upgrade?
So obviously if the upgrade isn't in the book. Then there's no like secret menu on artelsoriongames.com that lists the permissible upgrades. No, they invent.
Got you. So they have to fabricate.
You have to use the invention part of the tech ability to invent it and then you use the upgrade part to install your invented upgrade.
Uh, so you don't have to fabricate then, right? You go from invent to upgrade.
Yes.
Yeah, because you're not actually making an item.
Also covered in the FAQ.
Oh, okay.
On our website. There's a longer answer here covered in the FAQ, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, in another reason.
This one took me a little to write a very specific paragraph that would answer exactly that question.
Alright, there we go. Now, alright, we weren't able to get to all the questions from the community. I have a lot of them, but we did get to almost half of them. I know, there's so many of them. And please continue to send me your questions. You can email me, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com, just write in the subject. Questions for the mayor or, you know, Night City Council or even on social media, hit me up. I collect all these questions. Questions for the mayor or, you know, Knight City Council or even on social media. Hit me up. I collect all these questions. I'm gonna make a, I have a long document. And every episode will cover these questions. So as more come along, we'll get to it. And if we feel like we're backed up, then maybe one of the episodes will just dedicate it to getting all the questions out. But, uh, but yeah, we'll leave off there. I, I thank all of you in the community for sending in your questions and your positivity. And, uh, we'll be more than happy to answer those questions. But let's talk about some really cool stuff. I'm excited about this because this is a fun part of, of everything. I love talking about stuff like this. So we're gonna be talking about two DLCs from our tell Sorian games and the first one is called Hardened Mooks, which is the latest DLC. It just came out.
These are free DLCs.
Free, free DLCs. Thank you.
I'm not charging you.
Exactly. You just go and you can get it right now from our tell Sorian's website. Uh, the, the first one is called Hardened Mooks and this is the latest, uh, DLC from our tell Sorian games. And this basically is stat blocks and a little bit of information about some, uh, new bad guys that you can put in your game. There's stats for them, skills, uh, everything that you need for that. And there's even a one D ten chart. Is it a one D ten or one D six? Uh, where it gives them.
I'm pulling it up. I, I just literally, I clicked on our website and then I clicked the download button and I had it. It was so easy.
If you type hardened moocs into Google, it's literally the first thing.
It's a D ten, it's a Dean Chen chart. Put in hardened moocs.
That's it. And, uh, that D ten chart adds a little bit of a variable to the combat encounter. It gives one of them incendiary rounds, gives the other guy like, you know, another buff. Changes the things around and it's just a little bit of chaos that you can add. Um, but yeah, James, why don't you tell us about this DLC and then I'll talk about my ideas on how you can use it.
Hell yeah. So, um, hardened moocs is a, uh, I want to make a, I'm trying to make a series of, uh, of free DLCs called Break Glass in Case of Power Gaming. Um, because in Cyberpunk Red, um, players love to make crazy combat characters. Um, and, uh, this merits the need to challenge crazy combat characters. How do you, I mean, it's hard to be John Wick. But it's also hard to be John Wick's adversary. Um, they've kind of got to go to school and, uh, that was really easy for bosses because you can just make a cool boss. But it's much more mechanically difficult to build your own lower level moocs that will still challenge higher skill characters. Um, so here I did the work for you. Um, hardened moocs, uh, we've got hardened versions of the bodyguard, the booster ganger, the road ganger and the security operatives. As well as some, uh, make your own mooc charts for the cute little half page ones that you can just print out, cut them up, put them on index cards. Um, anyway, uh, these ones are designed to, uh, not economically break your game. So they're not fully kitted out with all these smart guns and stuff. But they'll still provide a challenge, which means that you'll get your economy right without, um, you know, providing these lower, um, still having the joy of so many moocs in this combat without your solo just blasting through them one by one.
Yeah.
Importantly also without killing your non-combat characters.
Yeah. That's, that's actually very important.
Tight rope, so. Oh, you should really check it out. Um, and we give some, uh, some extra encounter complications to add. And then maybe once you sprinkle this part moves, you put on the encounter complication, then maybe a player will die every couple of weeks.
Yeah, every couple of weeks.
Good. You'll like it.
Yeah, once they, the double sixes is what does it. I've, I honestly, I've found that players run away more often, which is a great way to not die in cyberpunk.
It's true. It's true. Uh, we got, uh, one of my favorite entries in this mooc encounter complication table on page, uh, on page two is one mooc has an SMG, no sense of self-preservation, an auto fire skill base of sixteen and no head armor.
That's fun. So one shot, they're dead, but this maniac is just going around, yeah, just spraying everybody. Okay, let me give you guys an encounter that I came up with using these hardened moocs and James, you're gonna be the judge of this encounter, right?
I haven't heard this yet.
No, you haven't. It's a complete surprise.
Real.
It's gonna be fun. I also did it for our next thing. So, all right, so I took the hardened moocs and I create a little bit of an encounter for you guys. This is gonna be using the hardened security operative and the hardened road gangers. These are the two moocs that, uh, you guys can use. The, it's what's designed. You can add some complications and some of the other moocs. And I also encourage you guys to use the moocs from the core rulebook as well to sprinkle them in. These guys, uh, yeah, mix them up, change things around. But the story is that this hardened security operative, there's one of them. They're a corporate extractor for Girafa. The construction corporation. He's got a Russian accent scar down the left eye. And now it's a cyber eye, but you still see the scar and, and a new cyber eye. So that's like kind of his, his flavor. So the hardened road gangers are hired by the security operative just to assist in transportation. This guy's kind of like a lone wolf. He's going out trying to pick somebody up for the corporation and just had a pocket full of cash, hired out these road gangers, right? So Girafa is extracting an employee that worked in their IT department. His name, Paul Fairhome. He's an executive IT specialist and recently he revealed, he's revealed as binary, a famous netrunner and leaker of corporate secrets. The only reason he's still alive is because they need to find all of his personal memory chips before they kill him. And Girafa has ways to extract that information from someone, especially if they have built in interface plugs like Mr. Binary or Paul Fairhome has. So that's the idea of the story is you gotta kind of intersect. And I have some possible locations here. Maybe there's a roadside bar and gas station, kind of like one of those combos. And that's where you can have an encounter where you meet these gangers and the operative at the, at the same time. You can also have an open road encounter where you're meeting them on a chase. They already have the IT specialist. And now you're trying to inter-interject with them. Or possibly they have the IT specialist, they're at a junkyard. Maybe this is like, uh, a hangout for the road gangers. And that could be another crazy, cool, big combat encounter that you can have with them. But either way, it's nice and simple, uses these hardened moocs. And like I said, sprinkle in some other moocs. And there you go. You got a nice little combat and, uh, whole session and encounter with this.
I love it. That sounds awesome. I love the idea of you doing it in a junkyard.
Yeah.
Junkyard would be super cool.
Yeah.
I was, in my head, I was, I was playing through, uh, I was playing through the, the stories and they're very vivid. I love it. Um, I love the idea of like a road stop bar and grill that was made out of a junkyard.
Yeah, that's good.
Together.
Oh, yeah, dude, bar, gas station, junkyard, all three of those things in one building.
Gas station, junkyard, stop and scrap.
Stop and scrap. Perfect.
Called stop and scrap. Anyway, um, this place is great. Sounds like it'd be in Texas.
Yeah.
If you spend too much time in Texas, John John.
There, yeah, I'm loving it. Yeah, I'm having fun in my own, uh, homebrew setting. But yeah, basically that's the idea. There's some other hardened moocs there that can give you guys some great ideas. That's just one thing that I came up with. Have at it. Go ahead, do it, have fun with it. But also check out that DLC so you can get your own inspiration and do the same thing I did. Come up with your own thing, right?
Yeah, we've got, um, another thing the DLC has got, it's not just stat blocks. Um, it's, it tells you these are balanced when you do them in this specific way. Um, and as long as you follow that rule, you'll be fine. Um, there's also a tip in between some of the, uh, that might fly out of the radar because it's in between the stat blocks. Um, another sneaky trick for customizing your moocs is to write them a single line of canned dialogue. Um, for combat to use in advance. So they're not supposed to all say the line. Um, but, and it would be really cheesy if they actually did.
Yeah.
But it'll help take the role playing weight off your shoulders while you do the hard work of presenting that interesting combat scene in stop and scrap or wherever you may be. Um, like a mooc with the, it's listed, a mooc with the line, I'll hold them off is gonna play differently and feel different than this one looks full of parts or Melvin, get your ass in here.
Yeah.
Um, they're gonna be, they're gonna be different. Uh, despite being moocs, they'll be unique. Or, you know, you could spend a bunch of time like John John, give them cool scars and cyber eyes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's awesome too.
I always like doing like one or two details. If you get too detailed, then you're just sitting there and you're like, yeah, then his left arm's got this and his right arm's got that. I mean, people are gonna be like, I get it. He's a cyberpunk bad guy, you know? But you just do like one or, one or two details just to have them stand out from everyone and for them to be recognizable. Then later you can tag and say, you see a gentleman in the corner with a red cyber eye and a scar down his face. You're like, oh dude, it's the guy. You know what I mean?
Imagine if you do it too much, they'll be like, which one?
Yeah, exactly.
Which guy with the red cyber eye and scar? We talking about this one?
This is Night City.
Is it Razor Fang or Tooth Man?
Yeah, there's somebody just going around poking out eyes. All right. So that's hardened moocs. Ladies and gentlemen, go for that. Now let's go for the next DLC, which was an April Fool's release, but it is not a joke. It is a legitimate, full-blown, well-thought-out DLC and that is Elf Lines Online. Tell us about Elf Lines, James.
So Elf Lines Online is actually a two-parter. Um, we've got Elf Lines Online and then we've got Elf Lines Online Expansion One. Um, so we actually released two Elf Lines free DLCs. Um, and Elf Lines Online is, uh, and it's an April Fool's, uh, thank book. At our town, we like to do April Fools, um, a little differently. We like to create, use it as an opportunity to create stuff that's sort of humorous and funny, but is also still totally playable. Um, because, uh, it's not a holiday in Balance Town. Um, you still go to work, you just re-theme everything to be a little funny. Um, because we make, you know, we make, uh, the other game that, uh, we're focusing on right now is The Witcher. Um, tabletop role-playing game. And that's a dark fantasy. And then we've got the dark future. So we spent a lot of time in pretty dark places.
Yeah, you guys are dark people.
Give us this one. Um, no, we're actually great. We're great people. Um, don't listen to any, anything else.
No, no. It's usually the opposite, like you make dark games, but you're actually nice people.
Corporate John John sponsored show. Not sponsored.
Not sponsored.
It's a joke.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, um, my point being Elf Lines Online is meant to be a, uh, an MMO that exists within Cyberpunk. So you can play a Cyberpunk character that is playing in Elf Lines Online character. And, uh, you can be, uh, you can do the like game within the game storyline.
Yeah, it's, it's an existing game that is really popular in the Cyberpunk Red universe. And, uh, I really enjoyed some of the mechanics, like there's pay-to-win mechanics with the game. There's microtransactions. And there's like even an exchange rate of like in-game currency with Eddies. And so basically you take that into account and you can kit up your character to be like super powerful before it even, you know, starts one hour of gameplay. And that's the idea of it. It's like, what if there was no, they were, they were unashamed of all of the, the core, the pay-to-win microtransactions. And there's nothing you can do about it and everybody's playing the game, right?
Yes, it's a, it's a warning. Um, it's a, it's a warning about the future of MMO gaming.
Yeah.
Of course. Um, it's, uh, I, I've been a big MMO gamer in my day. I don't MO anymore because it's just so much time.
Yeah, you're off of it. You're off the way, you're on the wagon. Is it on the wagon, off the wagon?
I'm off the wagon. I'm happily off the wagon.
Yeah, exactly.
I've jumped. I can tell you when I jumped off later, but it's not, uh, not important. I played a couple of MMOs and, uh, I wanted to, uh, include an interesting, um, game within the game, potential for a game within the game story. Um, so another cool part is that I be fully fleshed out, um, all of the combat systems and all of the skills. So it's not like, oh, I get it. There's a quick rule for determining what I do in this game. No, you get to make your own brand new character.
Yeah.
Um, based around, and it's not too different for, uh, it's not too different from the rules for Cyberpunk Red. So much so that you're like, oh, this is a wholly different game. It uses the same core and truncates the skill list. So it's very easy to play both at the same time because indeed you might be playing both at the same time. Because if, here's an example, here's, here's a cool rules interaction that happens in Elf Lines Online. Okay. I, my Elf Lines Online character is a merchant and they're trying to do their merchant role quest or something. Um, so they're interacting with a merchant who's an NPC in the game. So I get to use my in-game trading statistic. But then I get my quest reward from the quest and I want to sell it to another player. I don't use my character's trading statistic anymore. I use my Cyberpunk character's trading statistic because now I'm actually chatting to the other guy.
Ah, so now, yeah, 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 yeah. I get it. Yeah, that's genius. I didn't think about that. That's funny. I like that.
And, uh, so expansion, so there's the core one, which will detail all of the details, all of the, actually, here's how to play.
Mm-hmm.
Um, here's how to run encounters. Um, the game is actually really fun because it's based, it's basically a truncated version of an already really fun game. Um, it serves as a combat focused story. So the Elf Lines Online, um, mini-episode you might do in your campaign or ongoing bit. Um, would be, uh, would become more combat heavy because it's a video game. That's the action.
Exactly.
It's what they want.
It's raids, doing raids, big bosses, just like you do in MMOs. But James, uh, what if I don't have time to make a character and I just want some pre-made characters? What do I do?
I, I don't know what you do. Oh, you go to our tell Sorian games.com, you get expansion pass one. It's also a free DLC. And that comes with free starter characters that we did all the work for you for, um, they're all set up with, hey, they might want to be this special thing later. And you get your stuff and you roll out.
Yeah.
An Autobot.
There you go. So that was a layup, by the way, like alley-oop. I gave that to you and then you just.
I appreciate that. We didn't plan that.
We didn't plan that.
You can tell because it went really poorly.
It went terribly, but you know what? It's, it's all about the intention. The intention was to inform people.
Yeah. So DL, the other thing that happened in a, I'll, I'll just take the alley-oop again and I'll try to dunk it a second time because we're not following NBA regulation. Um, this is street hoops now. So the other thing in DLC pack, the DLC pack one for Elf Lines, which is a different download. So sorry, y'all have to click two links.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you can find a whole list of awesome, um, like ten players you'll find on Elf Lines and then ten players you'll find off Elf Lines. Um, by in one of our awesome writers.
Melissa Wong, shout out.
Melissa Wong, shout out indeed.
Mm-hmm.
It did a great job.
Yeah.
I am, I am super, super excited to steal all of it to save me time for my, uh, for my, uh, sessions to go ahead. I'm thinking I might do some Elf Lines Online sessions, maybe a Gen Con.
Well, do you want an idea like similar to the hardened moocs? Cause I do have one.
Hey, hit me with it. Hit me. I'll, I'll reverse alley-oop back to you.
All right, I got it.
Finish our street hoops combo meter.
I'm, I'm spinning it on, on my finger the entire time, right? The ball's spinning.
Gonna be a fireball. Throw it out.
He's on fire. All right.
I played a game on the GameCube. It was amazing. Go ahead.
Okay, good. I played it on SNES, so I'm old. All right. So this is a story with Elf Lines Online. Your party is tasked with finding a Biotechnica exec's young adult child. The only problem is he's gone without a trace. He's missing. The last words he told his father were, were, I'm gonna stay in the Elflands where they give a damn about me, dad. And he grabbed his Brain Dance headset, walked out the door and it's been over three weeks and the execs has only succeeded in finding the correct city net server where his son plays. The exec is extremely embarrassed by these events and his coworkers really make fun of him. He cannot stand the shame. So he sent in three different teams to talk sense to the boy. But his son is what is called a miasma farmer. And if you know anything about the miasma lore in Elflands, it's like this thing that's going around in the Elflands and that's really part of the entire story. But basically if you kill someone in Elfland, you gain a thousand gold, gold pieces, right? So him and his guild, they just go around slaying, uh, low-level people just to farm their money. That's literally all they, they just grief people. We've seen it in other MMOs. His son is a part of one of those guilds. And this corporate exec has sent his own corporate goons that he's paid to win. He's given them all kinds of armor and weapons. armor and weapons and everything. And I don't know, just get over there, talk some sense into my son. And they stick out like a sore thumb. The son and his guild are like, oh, here's my dad's uh, corporate goons. Let's just slay them and grief them and teabag them and do all the disrespectful things that we can do. And they haven't been able to get to the boy. So in comes you guys, the players. The exec has even tried to bribe the developers and he's been unsuccessful. And because they cannot be bought, they're just like, uh, they're, they're on the streets, you know, they're on the level. The players have to find a way to convince this corporal son to leave. They gotta find his location and it's kind of like a needle in the haystack of, in Elflines. But they gotta find like where this guy is and talk to him. Now, let me give you guys a little bit more because I think you would need a little bit more. The son's situation is, as I said, he's part of a miasma farming guild that assault low-level ELO players to farm that thousand gold point, gold pieces. And there's no honor in their tactics. They disregard the entire game story. They just grief people. And deep down, the exec's son knows this is wrong, but these are the only friends he has. And any gold pieces he makes goes straight to the guild leaders. So they can decide what to do with the currency. And they've promised the exec's son many times that they'll outfit his character if he shows he's worthy. Yet they've never delivered and he hopes that he can earn their admiration. So that's another angle where maybe you can go over there, talk to these, uh, talk to him, talk some sense into him. Like, hey, these guys aren't really your friend. You know, they're just using you. And try to do that while fighting monsters and boss battles and it's all intertwined in all of that. The guild leaders are scammers. They're selling the GP for Eddies in a black market. And there's a glitched boss that no one has defeated. The developers are working on a way to fix this boss, but are having major trouble. So anyone who can defeat that boss will be a legend. That's just like a side thing if you want to give your players that opportunity as well. And the son really wants his father to connect with him, but the corporation has a father prioritizing his son much less than the corporation. So that's another angle where you can play at the heartstrings at this family, like this father-son relationship and try to figure it out. Either way, it's a tale as old as time. It's a son that's addicted to gaming, being used by other people, taken advantage of. And it's all within this amazing world of Elf Lines Online.
Wow, that sounds real fun. I'm down. I'm down for it.
Let's do it, right?
Right, right.
So there you go, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we have given you two DLCs, actually three with the expansion pack. And that just scratches the surface. There's a bunch of other DLCs that are available and in our future episodes, we'll feature them as well. We'll talk about them. Just so you guys can get ideas. And maybe uh, now that you see me doing it this way, maybe James, you can come back with some scenarios of your own.
I'll, I'll, I'll go for it.
Yeah.
I'll uh, um, I'm a big fan of uh, I, I forgot to mention one thing about Elf Lines Online. Is that uh, there is a tender uh, love story also to be, to be read in Elf Lines Online. Um, about uh, Derek Silar uh, and his uh, his online GF. It's not to be missed.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely don't miss that. And uh, like we said, in the expansion, there's all kinds of pre-made NPCs that you can add into your game. So with my story and with those enemies or those NPCs and the idea that we're playing in an MMO, you can also design a dungeon. And uh, and that's how you can really connect. It's like your players get involved in this game. They, they be a part of his guild. They say, hey, let me go on that raid with you. And then that's how they connect with this guy. So.
You can use it as a framing mechanism of how your players know each other. Perhaps instead of meeting in a bar, you could meet online on Elf Lines Online.
Or maybe your players decide, you know what, let's get off of this Elf Lines thing and just go straight to these guys that are selling to the black market and stop them in the real world, in the meat space.
There you go. There you go.
Yeah, that's it. Alright, James, we did an hour. We answered questions. We talked about hardened moocs. We talked about Elf Lines Online. And
Episode one.
Episode one is in the books and this is the beginning of a wonderful relationship of between us and the community answering questions. And like I said, make sure you guys contact me on social media, con, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. Or go to our Telltale dot com's website. Go to From the Mayor's Desk. You can fill out questions there. We just want to make sure we can answer questions for the community and help you guys in your Cyberpunk Red games. Is there anything else you wanted to mention before we sign out, James?
No, I'm just uh, looking forward to answering more questions next time. We'll catch you next month.
Yeah, and tell us uh, on social media, tag me and our Telltale. And tell us how it goes with the hardened moocs. Tell us how it goes with the Elf Lines. If you decide to use these stories, if you guys have your own stories. We'll retweet, we'll talk about them. So we can get those stories out there. There's communities. We would love to hear how you guys deal with these DLCs.
Yeah, a great place to, uh, I know, I know two good places. Um, hit us on Twitter. Join our Discord. Hang out in John John's Discord.
Yeah, and if you go to my, the Discord I'm a part of and you go to affiliate servers, that's where you'll find the Artel Sorion Discord as well. And we all are one big happy family. Alright? That's it, James. Let's sign out. Have a good one, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you in Night City. The Night City Council is adjourned.